Assalamualaikum and welcome to the virtual town hall being hosted this evening by the Black Muslim Leadership Council and the Muslim Alliance in North America. Thank you for joining us. We're going to get started with a dua from Dr. Joshua Salam.
[speaking Arabic]
[speaking Arabic] Alhamdulillah, Rabbil alameen. Aww rahman, you're right. Malik, you're me, Dean. Iya, can I, but do I, yeah, can I stay in? You didn't know, sir, I pull musta team. Sir, I pull the living, I know I'm tell you. Where the maghdub, be I lay him, well, it's been. I mean. So the call out, I mean, Hamdulillah. Thank you, just a little higher, Dr. Salam. Black Muslim Leadership Council and the Muslim Alliance of North America is excited to host this very important conversation this evening. I'd like to say, assalamualaikum again to everyone and welcome to the what is at stake in the 2024 election town hall meeting. I am so thrilled that you all could join us for this very important event. Again, my name is Salima Susswaal and I am the CEO and founder of the Black Muslim Leadership Council. BMLC is one of the hosts today for this virtual town hall along Manna, along with Muslim Alliance in North America. And before I introduce Dr. Akanki Rashid, Manna's Vice President, I want to just share a few words about BMLC. BMLC was founded this year and is devoted to advocating for the unique needs of the Black American Muslim community. We focus on policy advocacy, voter turnout, civic education, and leadership development and training. And we are proud to be one of America's first Black American Muslim-led organizations of its kind in the nation. I am so proud of BMLC and I thank each of you for already showing so much love and support for our work. And now I will hand it over to my co-host, Sister Akanki Rashid, to share a few words about the important work of Manna.
And congratulations on starting BMLC. May Allah bless you and the organization to achieve your mission and your objectives for the community. Alhamdulillah. I mean, and my name is Akanki Rashid. Assalamualaikum to everyone. I'm the Vice President of the Muslim Alliance in North America. For those of you who don't know about Manna and you're new to hearing about Manna, we are an organization that was started in 2003. Our mission is to maintain and grow a broad-based network within the African-American Muslim community that helps to serve and strengthen our community so that we are more self-sufficient. And we are working on building this network and you can visit our website to find out more about that. It's our pleasure to partner with BMLC for this event and we look forward to an exciting conversation and an engaging conversation. Back to you, Salima, and thank you so much for partnering with us.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you so much, Sister Akanki, for that great overview. Now we will move into the panel discussion, Insha Allah. During this discussion, I will ask our expert panelists to some pre-selected questions focused on the importance of civic education, as well as questions about the most pressing domestic and international concerns today leading up to this election. And then there will be an opportunity towards the end to, for you to write in the chat some questions that we will select to, we will select some of those questions to be answered and also the panelists can see your, can see your questions as well. And so I am going to start to call upon the panelists to introduce themselves and I'll just start from left to right. Dr. Sherman Jackson, please introduce yourselves and I'll just, I'll just say you have two minutes for your introduction, Insha Allah, Dr. Sherman Jackson.
Fifteen seconds will be enough. Sherman Jackson, I'm the King Faisal Chair of Islamic Culture of the University of Southern California and I'm a founding scholar of the American Learning Institute for Muslims.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Sherman. Hajja Ayesha Jeffrey C. Say, please introduce yourself and share a little about yourself, Insha Allah.
Assalamualaikum wrakmatullahi wa barakatuh. Alhamdulillah. I am grateful to be in this stellar company. I know I'm in the room with some of the most renowned thinkers, activists, and, as we say, changemakers. I'm currently the Chief Strategic Officer for the KMI International Consultancy, which is a public relations consultancy that services global leaders in civic society, business, government, and faith communities. I'm also, what I hope, is a servant of Allah's Puniwata and my community here and I'm looking forward to moving through the evening, if you will, with a clear sense of where Muslim America communities want to go. I remember as both a young professional and recent convert at the time, talking to my mentor about my conflicting feelings about my chosen professional path, if you will, and the discipline I had chosen, which was thrusting me into the political environment of America. That being said, I felt I was in conflict with my faith, but he was very quick to remind me that the only thing that needed to change was my point of view and how I resolved the encounters that I was experiencing. I'm looking forward to also answering the question, are we going to be as Muslims, subject of change? Are we going to be the object of change? So I hope by the end of the evening, we'll be clear.
Just a little, I think you so much, Hajja. Next, we have Dr. Alia Omar. Please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Assalamualaikum wrakmatullahi wa barakatuh. Everyone, I want to first thank Sister Salima and I also want to extend my thanks to Sister Akanki for bringing us together today. I am a lifelong Chicagoan with a long history of social justice activism. Professionally, I'm a brain specialist, working, mother of two now adult sons whom I'm very proud of, Alhamdulillah, but raised Muslim within the local community here. And I live in the far northern suburbs, which often doesn't lend itself, I think, to people who have concerns about many of the issues that impact African-Americans and particularly African-Americans in the ways in which we've traditionally struggled in this society. I do benefit from coming from a family with a long civil rights legacy and so I was never remiss to understand that there are people in the world, including myself, whose rights are never so solidly guaranteed as the rights of others and that we must continually fight not only for ourselves but for others out of a sense of universal justice and that this reflects the purest teachings of Islam. And Insha Allah, if we are adherent as Muslims, then we are people who are constantly on the path of doing good in the world. I sit on the boards of a few local organizations, including the Inner City Muslim Action Network, where we are proudly invested in making change in one of the most complicated neighborhoods in Chicago. And I'll leave it there.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you so much, Dr. Alia. We look forward to hearing more from you, Insha Allah. Sister Ayesha K. Mustafa, please share something about yourself and introduce yourself to everyone here. Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum salam and thank you Sister Salima and Sister Akanki for this opportunity to be with you today. I am a person from a family of civil rights workers from the Dr. King era, being born and raised in Mississippi, which we call Ground Zero. I went to Bucknell University in Pennsylvania just to escape the South. I had a double major in psychology and political science because I couldn't figure out if we had a legal problem or a mental problem. And then later on, I got my masters at Columbia College in Chicago in journalism, which is my profession now that led me to become an instructor at Tugalo College in, near Jackson, Mississippi, where I teach mass comm investigative reporting, etc., all the newsprint courses there. The highlight of my Muslim career was when I traveled with the delegation led by Mount W. D. Muhammad to Palestine. At that time, he was meeting with PLO president Yasser Arafat and to witness that, that meeting was again, one of the highlights of my, my career. And I thank Manna for posting the profiles of all of us, so it is available at Manna for further reading.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you so much, Sister Ayesha. Brother Bashir Jones, please introduce yourself and share a little about yourself, Insha Allah.
Assalamualaikum wrakmatullah. I'm so honored to be here. It's like, I'm very impressed with the bio and the work of Sister Dr. Alia and all the great work she's doing in Chicago and just becoming aware of that work. But to be on a panel with these amazing people, especially those three giants that has really had an impact in my, my life. Sister Hajja, Ayesha Jeffrey C. Say, who's just an amazing scholar and a worker and has been doing it for longer than I've been alive. To Sister Ayesha Mustafa, who's been holding it down at the Muslim Journal and who is one of our foremost giants when it comes to media and just to see the strength of the Muslim Journal today. I've been begging her to let me get on board. I'm hoping after this town hall, the only reason I took this town hall meeting is because Sister Ayesha was here. So I'm hoping that she give me a chance over there at Muslim Journal. And then to be a Muslim, Black man who strives to be a thinker, there's no, I'm a student of Dr. Sherman Jackson. I'm a student of this and he's somebody who I'm honored by and his brilliance and his consistency. So I'm very appreciative just to be here. It's been two decades, over two decades, I've been working in the political space, the community activist space and also in the space of multimedia. You know, I'm a Morehouse man, was a radio show host, a television, appeared on certain television programs. I was a city councilman, first Muslim city councilman in Cleveland, Ohio, and also a former candidate for mayor in the city of Cleveland. Now I'm a senior advisor on Dr. Cornel West's campaign, the president, a senior advisor for the Muslim community. And my main focus in this part of my life is to help the Muslim communities transition from relying on chicken dinners and fish fries to bring us success. It's time that we take the land that we have, the assets that we have, and we have to turn it into something that takes care of our community for over, for the next hundred years. So this is my focus and I am, and I close with this, one of Salima's biggest supporters and I appreciate all the work she does. And Sister Akanki, you know, we appreciate you and everything that you've done for our community. But Salima, Allah has put something on you. He's given you a responsibility. And one thing about our community is that Black women have always led us and that Black women have always been a spine of our community. And we support you, sister, and we stand with you. So thank you so much.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you so much, Brother Bashir, and I always definitely appreciate your, your support and your, and your wisdom and guidance. Alhamdulillah. So let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to start, I have ten questions and then we're going to go to audience questions. I just like, just a little housekeeping, I would ask that the members of the audience, that you wait until you're prompted to add questions to the chat, just because I don't want them to get like lost in conversation. Maybe about ten minutes before we wrap up the panel discussion, you're going to be prompted by Sister Akanki to start to write in your questions in the chat. And we are going to be selecting some as we may not have a chance to get to all of them. However, we will see them, we will record them and maybe follow up with you at another time, but we're going to do our best to get to all of them. And feel free, if also, if you have just feedback that you want to post that's not a question, feel free to, to offer that. This is a town hall meeting and we're doing our best, although it's virtual, to be as interactive and accessible as possible. So with that being said, we're going to jump right in. We would ask that the panelists keep your answers to one minute for each question, Insha Allah, to the best of your ability. And we're just going to go ahead and get started. So civic engagement is something I have personally devoted my life to. I teach it, I live it, and I encourage each and every person to get engaged, to make a difference. I feel very strongly that it is particularly important for Muslims to be civically engaged. In your own words, why do you think it is important for Muslims to be civically engaged? And what would you suggest for someone looking to become more engaged? And we'll start with Dr. Jackson.
[speaking Arabic] [speaking Arabic] [speaking Arabic] I guess that's my one minute right there, right, Salima? Okay, alright. Let me, let me, let me preface my, let me preface my remarks and I'm going to try and keep it to one minute with that I'm more, I see myself more on the scholarly and intellectual side of these conversations. I'm not a, sort of formally speaking, at least, a political activist. So my remarks hopefully would be taken in that context and I think they're part of, well, let me, let me get to them. I think that it's important, before we get into a conversation about civic engagement, that we as a Muslim community, and perhaps more particularly as a Black American Muslim community, have a serious conversation about a Muslim civics. And by that, I mean, how do we come into spaces, exchange ideas? Some of those ideas that are mutually contradictory, some interests that may appear to be mutually contradictory. We're a very diversified community. How do we accommodate all those points of view, all those visions into a single conversation that on the one hand enables us to keep the community together, alright? And at the same time enables us to move forward because we've been able to arrive at least at some, some kind of modus operandi in terms of how we're going to proceed. So for me, it's really important that we find ways to sustain conversations that will admit all the voices, and that's not to say that, to say that all the voices are correct, but to give all the voices an opportunity to speak so that we as a community can look at what we have in terms of ideas that comes into this space and then make decisions about which ideas are worthy of proceeding on or which ideas should be left behind. But in the process, we're all enriched, I think, all too often, particularly when it comes to political activism. And one of the other things I want to say is that I don't think that civic engagement is limited to just legislative politics. I think it's, it's a lot broader, a lot broader than that. But I think that particularly when it comes to legislative politics, you know, oftentimes we come into these spaces. We have very strong opinions, very strong ideas and we articulate those ideas and then everybody becomes either one or zero and the community is torn apart. And even if it's not torn apart, you know, we generate, you know, internal bleeding and this has a negative effect on the community. So I think it's really important that we find ways of developing a Muslim civics that will enable us to have the difficult conversations. And in doing so, we won't be any different from any successful Muslim community, any place in the history of Islam. And I'll stop there. I didn't really answer your question, did I?
No, you did, you did. You, you answered it and then some and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And we'll get back to some of those points that you made. Hajja Ayesha Jeffrey C. Say, please, if you need me to repeat the question, it's just in your own words, why do you think it is important for Muslims to be civically engaged and how would you suggest for someone to become more active?
What I'd like to do is, is continue the conversation, if you will, that I would love it inserted here. The idea that we need to be able to premise our conversations in spaces that allow for these varying opinions and that is the challenge with civic engagement. The difficulty is how, because of our diversity, I think it begins with religious illiteracy. So the foundation and the premise of our conversations are framed within the Quran and Sunnah. That's the source of our guidance. And then that allows for varying opinions and then it will get down to how we communicate, you know, learning how to heal what I feel is cultural toxic means or methods of communication. And again, revert back to the Sunnah about how we communicate with one another, how we share ideas. I think the spaces are in a contemporary conversation, third spaces. I think there are spaces that are outside of our home, our workplace. They can be inside of the masjid, but they can be in spaces that allow for the sharing of ideas and they can be guided, which is a revival of what I think some of us in the room might remember, at least from our parents' time, calling them salons and from traditional history and African-American life, where salons gathered the great minds of the time, gathered the great artists of the time, gathered the great thinkers of the time and changemakers in spaces that were intimate and allowed for a legitimate exchange of ideas. We are mandated though to be engaged. We're not a, excuse me, we're not a community or faith path that goes into seclusion. We cannot spread this religion if we do not exemplify it, if our voices are not heard and we can't induce the transformation that is promised to Islam. We can transform this culture, but we have to be in a certain state. We have to have a certain economy. And I think that more emphasis needs to be placed on facing in, meaning creating the proper agenda, creating the proper framework, creating the proper strategic actions that get us there. And I know that there is an ease in creating that kind of consensus. We have to first make that intention. We don't have and have not revisited American priorities as Black Americans since Reconstruction. Since Reconstruction. I haven't seen a comprehensive agenda, save as how it came in incidentally through the Civil Rights Movement. But that was not necessarily a consensus. It was that we knew we had a jihad and we involved ourselves and conducted ourselves. But I think it's time to, if you will, emphasize more facing in, getting an agenda that we can build on, assessing all of these needs and then creating the spaces where these exchanges can happen. And then we build a very dynamic political constituency to change America.
Alhamdulillah. Thank you so much, Hajja, Ayesha. Dr. Alia?
I think that we have to, you know, stay very in touch with who we are and where we're going and that that's a central part of, you know, why we need to be engaged civically. You know, I am the grand, I'm the great granddaughter of a slave. My grandfather was really old. And I'm the, I'm the great granddaughter of a slave and I never sort of forget that because we are, at the various ages that we are on this panel, we are some of the first generations of African-Americans who are able to have contiguous contexts to our surroundings, our environment and ourselves as a people. And, and to understand what has happened to us across more than our own lifespan, so across decades. There are reasons the education was withheld from us so that we could not have that continuity before. For most of our time in the United States of America, we have been extraordinarily disenfranchised people. The only people who are even comparable are indigenous brothers and sisters. And the right to vote in and of itself has always been a fraught subject for us to be civilly engaged. So why is it that so much effort has been put into this? If we were truly as ignorant as, as, you know, some people would like to say, if we were truly as incapable as some people would like to say, then that would not be the case. It is the case because as Nelson Mandela pointed out, we are more powerful than we can imagine and we have to tap into that power. An only way to tap into the power that our forefathers have fought for in this country and to continue their legacy, which places African-Americans as the only racial group to have foisted positive change, mass societal positive change in the United States of America throughout its history. Only way for us to do that is to engage at every level of the society. Now that honors who we are as African-American Muslims, as Sister Hajja Ayesha said, you know, we are not an isolationist people. We are a people who participate and we are people who by bringing our values to the table have consistently brought about more just societies. And so to be African-American and to be Muslim is not something that's contradictory in any way and it doesn't dictate that we should withdraw from this society. It demands that we participate. Because the other thing that we are not, and I say this both as an African-American and as a Muslim, is we are not here to beg. We're not here to beg, okay? And, and when we don't participate in the society, when we don't sit at the tables of power, then we are forced to ask others to step in and represent our ideas to the extent that it doesn't cause them any discomfort. And instead, we can push the change in this society and, and participate fully. But we have to recognize that as not only a right, but as a legacy that we must hold because every generation is simply a placeholder to move us forward and, and that's my perspective.
Alhamdulillah. Such gems, so many gems being dropped here, Mashallah. I'm so honored to just be in the presence of your experts. Sister Ayesha Mustafa.
Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum salam.
Okay, I think I want to list a few action items in terms of what I see as the skeleton for civic engagement. Of course, we all know as Muslims and as the Quran direct, we're to accept those who have been put in authority over us. And then, you know, as the, as the prophet told us, help your brother even if he's in the wrong. And they said, how do we help him in the wrong? We are supposed to hold him back from the wrong. So we want to help our government by holding it back from the wrong as we accept that it has an authority over us. My public concerns that I would put on a list to engage with, one is we need to define democracy. Because, you know, we have these pseudo-concepts of democracy that we're spreading all around the world and everybody knows is not democracy but us. You know, we are a republic. We're not a democracy. Israel is not a democracy. We need to look at our First Amendment rights that we all rely on and the reason we accept to be Americans is because we have those rights. If you change that, then the whole ballgame changes. The First Amendment, our right to protest, our right to religion, which gave us the right to accept the faith of our choice, our right to a free press and you know, there's, that's one statement. There's no period. The right, freedom of religion and free press is all in one concept. The Second Amendment, the right to bear arms. Everybody was upset when the Black Panthers bared arms, but nobody's upset today when the establishment bears arms. Now we have all these youth out in the community and all of them are bearing arms. So what do we do about that? Is there something within that Second Amendment right we can utilize to grab our youth, our young men in particular, who are measuring their manhood with the number of guns that they have in their possession? And pull them back into a civic engagement that will better us all. The Thirteenth Amendment that gave us freedom and we know that has that loophole in it itself for imprisonment. And then we have so many of our community imprisoned until we have the concept of the pipeline of prison that starts in the school system, from the school system to the prison system, the pipeline to the prison system. from the school system to the prison system, the pipeline to the prison system. The Fourteenth Amendment, where it gave us our freedom from enslavement, I think we need to revisit it in a context of reparations because they have taken away so many of those rights that we had gained. If affirmative action cannot be contained, then let's revisit my forty acres and my mew. If you can make some concessions for the contribution that we made to this economy, to the establishment and the wealth and the stability of this country, then we need to revisit reparations. We need to demilitarize the police and stop letting Israel train our police officers. In education, we need to revisit education. If we can't teach our history in our education system, then we need to build more museums and have a museum circuit that integral part in our education system. We need to recruit for political involvement. And Salima, you know, you lead the way on that. You took the, as they say, you took the bull by the horn and told, and told the rest of us, you can follow or not, but you going forward. And we appreciate that in you, and we appreciate you dragging us along with you. We need mentors, we need advocates, we need support, and that includes dollars. Because running for a campaign these days, you have to have the ability to raise money. We need a system where we guard those who whom we selected to be in in public office to represent us. They need their protections, they need to be guarded. And we need a resistance, for example, against APEC, which has dominated the entire political system of our country to the point where we have no say so. Is is APEC's country? You know, we used to talk about the the old commercials, what, I don't know, Bashir, what was the old commercial? Was it a Bud Light, uh, somebody's country? It was Marlboro's country. Now it's APEC's country, we just living in it. So those are just a few of the things I would like to speak about at this point.
Mashallah, oof. That was everything, mashallah, alhamdulillah. I I appreciate, this is like a, this is everyone, please take note. This is a master's class that we are presenting to you today, mashallah. Brother Bashir, tell us what you have for us.
I love you, sister, but for you to have me behind all them, you can't do that.
I want to switch up the orders throughout the program, I promise.
That's too heavy, that's too heavy. You know, Dr. Jackson, he talks about this, man, his book, Islam and the Black American, The Third Resurrection, and talks about how, especially as African American Muslims, we went in and we cleaned up communities. What I need for everybody to understand is that before you think about being civically engaged, you will not be able to properly civically engage if you're not community engaged. You need to be focused on serving your community. I remember the first time I ran for city council, I lost by six hundred votes. And it was a neighborhood that I grew up in. But I came back and I'm knocking on doors, talking to people. I just graduated from Morehouse. And I'm like, I I came back, and the lady said to me, ain't nobody tell you to come back? And she was serious. And the reason why she said that was because I, even though I grew up in the community, I thought I knew what the people needed. And you don't know what the people need until you ask them, until you spend time with them. And that's why it's very important for our brothers and sisters who are getting civically engaged, you can't properly do it till you know what the people need. And that's one of the things that we were very successful with as a community, particularly as African American. Nobody did it like us, we cleaned up communities. I'm a third generation Muslim. My grandfather and Imam Suraj and those brothers in Brooklyn, they did a thirty day, a thirty day, um, um, I'm not gonna call it a protest. They, they, they cleaned up Brooklyn. Brooklyn wouldn't be gentrified today if it wasn't for Black Muslims over at, over, over there off of Fulton Avenue. The West End in Atlanta wouldn't be what it is today if it wasn't for Black Muslims. And we can go all across the country and say the same thing in every inner city. I tell people all the time, sister, you safer in the inner city than you will ever be in rural America. They don't even know how to say it, Salam alekum, sister, they don't even know how to say it, but they know because of experience, that there's quick consequences for messing with that sister with that scarf on her head. That is because we were community engaged. So before you talk about voting and talk about doing all of that, you can't properly fight for the people if you don't know what the people are going through. So the first step, the first step, I want to repeat it in closing, the first step is to get community engaged, see what the people are dealing with, see what the people are going through, and then that will shape your perspective on what needs to happen civically. Very important.
Alhamdulillah. Wow, this, that was, I'm so, that, I was very intentional in asking that question first because I think that 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 your answers to that question really established sort of the platform for the rest of this conversation. And so I have a second question, I'm sorry?
Uh, before you go to the second question, can I add something to that first question?
Of course, Dr. Jackson.
And and I don't, I don't, I don't want to be provocative, but in terms of, as I said, establishing a Muslim civics, I want that civics to be solid. I want it to be a civics that makes us feel safe in coming in into those spaces because we've reached certain consensuses on the parameters of that, of that discourse, all right? And we know that our voices are welcome. Some of what I've heard here, for some Muslims out in the field, it will sound overly pragmatic. So we talk about rights, we talk about First Amendment, we talk about the Constitution, we talk about voting. For some members, there's still a religious question in terms of the status of all those things. And so we have to have that conversation about, well, what, what is our position? As Muslims, for example, let's say, on the Constitution. We have to have those difficult conversations. What is the shadaa position on voting? We have to have those kinds of conversations. Now, a healthy civics, however, and this goes back to the, to the very tradition of Islam itself, a healthy civic says this, and this is what our willness to get. Some Muslims, in good conscience, in good faith, based on their understanding of the Quran and Sunnah, or perhaps even the Islamic juristic tradition, may conclude that it is not allowed to vote. Let's just say that, for example, all right? And I think that if we are honest, we know some of the brothers and sisters who are out there will hold those kinds of views, all right? What I want to say, however, is that, that's fine, but that's not the only view that can be sustained Islamically. And so those people who hold those views, they simply hold those views. We don't have to fight with them, we don't have to fall into a zero sum mentality. It's just like, if I'm a Maniki, I have certain views that Hanafis don't accept. That's fine, they go on being Hanafis, I go on being a Maniki, and we are all part of the same community. I think that we have to internalize this kind of civics. Otherwise, when we come into the room with people who have different views, we get uncomfortable. And we feel that we can't share views, we have to conquer the other side. And I won't be comfortable until I absolutely bring you over to my point of view. And I think that that is part of what brings the tension, you know, into our attempts to to, to, to share our views with each other. So I just want to say that, you know, you know, we can't just skip over the ideological questions, the, the Sharia questions. We can't just skip over those. And we have to accept the possibility that there may be differences of opinion there. But those differences of opinion do not shut down the discourse. There have always been differences of opinion among, among Muslims when it comes to Sharia. And so those people will hold that, hold that, those who don't, they don't, both sides are basing what they're saying on solid dalil, insha Allah. And so we simply move on from there. And if we can establish that kind of mutual recognition, we'll be much more effective because we'll be much more comfortable in having the kinds of conversations that we need to have. I just wanted to put that out there because I think it's very dangerous for us to get carried away with overly pragmatic approaches to what we're trying to do.
I, I, I hate to follow up with Dr. Jackson, Salima, but if I can, just ten seconds. This issue right here is a major issue. And I'm glad Dr. Jackson brought this up because some of my biggest critics in this political space has been Muslim leadership within our community, who expresses, I remember, and I ain't gonna say no name, but I did, I did an interview with a, with a, a major sheikh in our community. You can go to YouTube and look it up. And prior to October seventh, this sheikh said, I don't know how you're gonna get involved in politics because, and he said this in front of a thousand people. And then after October seventh, we recognized how little power Muslims have in this world. And then now everybody is engaged in a civic conversation and showing up to city council and stuff. But it hasn't, it hasn't been really rectified with the people because for so many years, Muslims, quote unquote, scholars, and I don't mean to say respectfully, have been disconnected from what's happening on the ground level. And there's been a serious battle between the youth of Islam, you know what I'm saying? And the leadership of Islam, scholarly leadership in Islam, and that needs to be rectified. So, Dr. Jackson, thank you, thank you for bringing that up, sir.
One more tiny point, Salima, and I promise I'll shut up.
No, this is all good.
No, 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 I promise I'll shut up. Because the, the other point that I want to make is, part of our civics, we've got to get our jurisdictional boundaries straight. And and that's a fancy word, but let me just, let me just, let me just try to explain what I mean by that. A Muslim scholar trained in Sharia, his or her primary function is to answer questions of Sharia legitimacy, halal and haram. All right? And so the sheikh can tell me that voting is haram. And I'm not saying that I agree with that, that's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying that a sheikh can have a principled opinion to the effect that voting is haram. Fine, there are going to be other shiyyuq who are going to say, no, voting is halal. Okay, the question of voting with regard to the sheikh is halal, haram. Civic engagement, halal, haram. That's the extent, the primary extent of their jurisdiction. After that, once he says, or she says, it's halal, then how we go about doing that is outside the purview of the sheikh. Because questions of factual efficiency, all right, are not questions that are answered on the basis of the Quran and Sunnah alone. So will this, will this particular candidate serve our needs or interests better? Or will this particular candidate serve our interests or needs better? That's not a question for the sheikh, he may have his own personal opinion, and that's fine. But in terms of what he speaks authoritatively to, we have to keep those jurisdictional boundaries straight. Because oftentimes, in fact, it's going to be the, the activist who's involved on the ground with the actual civic engagement, who knows the ins and outs of that enterprise. That's the expertise that we need to rely on in terms of the how, in terms of whether it's halal or haram or not. That's where the sheikh, shiyyuq come in. And I think that if we can, if we can, as, 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 as Haja Ayesha said, as a matter of Islamic or religious literacy, if we can internalize these jurisdictional boundaries, we'll have a lot easier time talking to each other, all right? And we'll have a lot easier time interpreting each other's words, okay? Because sometimes, some of the activists, can I speak frankly, or is it, it's not?
Of course.
Not this kind of party.
You're being recorded, but of course.
Oh, oh, wow. I'm being recorded anyway.
We all are.
So, you know, scholars somehow, sometimes speak outside their boundaries. Activists sometimes speak outside their boundaries. If we can get those boundaries straight, all right, then we can have constructive conversations. You see what I'm saying? Where we don't come in as each other's enemies. All right, and I think that, I think that, that, that will bring a healing to our conversation, all right? Because right now, these conversations are so hard, all right? Because there's so much internal bleeding that we've inflicted on each other because our boundaries haven't been straight.
Alhamdulillah, you know what? Everything that you guys just shared in this last ten minutes here, that is enough for another conversation in itself. Just one event focused on that conversation. And I want you to know that we are going to be organizing some educational workshops, BMLC, in the future, out throughout the course of this year. And I am letting you know in front of everyone that I'm likely going to call you all back just for the educational piece behind everything that you all just shared. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. I want to do a little bit of housekeeping. In the essence of time moving forward, I am going to ask some questions to certain panelists. I'm not going to ask each panelist to answer every question because we just won't get to the questions if I do it that way. Also, something that we meant to mention early in, in the beginning of the program. If your name is not coming up in, in, in the, in the chat, if, if you're not identified, if you're just iPhone, for example, or Samsung, please write your name because we want to know who's in the room. We, we, we've curated here a safe space that is really interactive. Most people do these type of events through a webinar. We were very intentional in letting everyone be in the room together so that we can see your comments and we can, you know, follow your questions and, and just everyone can sort of share, share space in, in, in community together. So, Inshallah, please write your, rename yourself if you're just coming in as, as, as something other than who you are. Okay, so, next question. I'm going to direct this question first to Dr. Alia Amar. And the reason, well, I'll tell you the question and, and then I'll, I'll give a little commentary. Since October seventh, we have seen a devastating humanitarian crisis unfold in Gaza, with tens of thousands killed, mostly women and children, and nearly two million people displaced. Just this week, we are seeing the overwhelmed city of Rafah, where an astronomical number of displaced Palestinians are sheltering, being increasingly threatened by Israel's military offensive. For many of us, this crisis is one of the most important issues impacting this upcoming election. Dr. Alia, I'm asking you this question first because I know that you spent time in Palestine and that you were actually in Jerusalem, I believe, maybe Tel Aviv, when the, on October seventh, when, when, when the war started. In your words, please, tell me, what action do you think must be taken immediately to address this crisis? And what actions should be taken in the long term? And I do want to just share, I don't know if everyone here is, is following the news, but just today, President Biden announced this plan of this deal that he is advising that Israel has apparently agreed to, and they're waiting for Hamas to agree to around a temporary ceasefire that would lead to a permanent ceasefire in the, in the releasing of hostages and, and moving on to a two-state solution and also the rebuilding of Gaza. So I just wanted to put that out there. As you answer your question, consider that as well. What actions can be taken and what do you think needs to be immediately addressed? Please share with us, Dr. Alia.
Thanks. So, you know, yes, I was, I was in Palestine and Israel on October seventh and for several weeks before that. And, you know, the world is stuck on October seventh as a date, as if it sort of emerged out of a vacuum. The, the depictions of what Palestinians are fighting for is depicted as if they are asking for something that is completely unreasonable. I don't think that it's unreasonable for an indigenous people to demand the right to live in peace in their own society. I don't think that it's something that most people would find incomprehensible to say that you'd like to wake up in your home and go to bed in your home, knowing that that will be your home and you will be safe in it. You want to be able to feed your children and educate them, and you don't want to be treated like a second-class citizen and subjected to everything from random arrests to the constant evictions, to the constant, daily insults and assaults on your being. I think that nearly any people of faith want to be able to have access to their holiest sites and to pray and worship in the way that is most meaningful to them. And so the things that Palestinians were concerned about and the oppressions that they were suffering from before and the oppressions that they were suffering from before October 7th, um, cannot be unresolved issues after the deaths of 40,000, uh, Kassans. It, it, it simply can't be the case. And so today, when President Biden made his announcement, um, which not so surprisingly was insufficient, um, what he's basically saying in that announcement is that along with Qatar and Egypt, um, and the, and, and others in their coalition, they would like to offer Gazan's food. And, um, after long, long battles with, uh, thousands, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of people worldwide protesting for months, um, they would like to say, oh, you could return to your homes. Well, what homes? We see the pictures. Can we, can we not trust with our own eyes? What homes? There are no homes. Oh, we will rebuild the homes in phase three. And you'll have a right to live, uh, you'll get food, you'll get a right to return to your home and maybe, maybe at some point we will rebuild. But under still the continued oppression that you have dealt with, not since the 1947 Nakba, but since the Balfour Agreement. And so President Biden is offering the bare minimum at this point. And for those of you out there who are exhausted, like I am, um, from the inconsistencies of this administration, who seem quite capable of recognizing when Ukrainians are being subjected to oppression and being subjected to war crimes, but completely incapable of seeing war crimes committed against Palestinians. Um, you know, this was not such a surprising announcement. Now, you asked what needs to be done. Of course, we have, we have asked repeatedly for a ceasefire. We have actually gone to the administration. And at the point at which the violence was at its height, we asked again for, uh, for a ceasefire. We asked for humanitarian aid. Alhamdulillah, at least that is something. If you're on the ground, uh, then, then that is something. But what needs to happen in the future is to have equality um, and for America to take a position uh, that reflects a certain morality that I'm not sure we've ever developed. I'm not sure how we find it, but we need to find it fast. Because what is needed in Palestine is not just the immediate ceasefire. It's not just the humanitarian aid. We've called for in our foreign policy agenda from the Black Muslim Leadership Council, we have called for the rebuilding of Gaza as a Palestinian region with no Israeli oversight. You cannot tell me that the hand on the whip will be kind. It's still a hand, it's still holding a whip. So we need to be able to see that a Palestinian state is recognized. Now, there are Palestinians, there are debates within the Palestinian community. Um, some people say a two-state solution won't work. Some people say a one-state solution won't work. I leave that to our Palestinian brothers and sisters, you know? But a solution in which a Palestinian state is recognized with all due rights to an independent state, a solution in which Israel is held accountable for its war crimes, and that the United States does not stand against the ICC when it comes to the administration of justice. We cannot celebrate in this country that Donald Trump was found guilty on 34 counts and say, oh, we are a country of law and order, and then put the blinders on when the ICC says, stop this genocide. And so we need to be, we need to have a more consistent policy.
Alhamdulillah, Dr. Alia, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Give me your thoughts on this. Thank you so much, Dr. Alia. Um, your thoughts on Gaza, Dr. Jackson?
Me?
Yes, would you like to? Someone in the audience is asking for you, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak on this and then we'll go to Basir.
Oh, no, okay, no, 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 that, 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 that's fine. Um, look, I, I think that, um, and I'm, I'm going to be, I'm going to be frank about this. And this, this goes back again to why I think that, you know, we need to have a functional civics among us because we need to soothe our hearts. We need to be able to come together and function as a community. Because what is going on with Gaza in terms of the United States' position on it? All right? This administration has been horrific. It's been disgusting in the manner in which it has dealt with the carnage in Gaza. It's been absolute, just outrageous. But we have to recognize, all right? And everybody, don't, don't hate the player. All right? But we have to recognize our weakness in affecting the political posi- positions that this government takes. And in order for us to arrive at a stronger position, we're going to have to be able to do at least two things. We're going to have to marshal our own resources. First of all, we have to generate them, all right? Mar- generate and marshal our own resources and bring those to bear in order to try to affect the kind of decisions that we want to see. Why is the other side, you think? Why is the other side able to exert that pressure? Because they like them? Really? We don't remember what happened in Europe because they like them? Because they've been able to marshal political resources and to bring them to bear on the policies of this government? And we have to understand that as long as we wait and we mire in all this disagreement and we mire in all this petty division, et cetera, et cetera, we won't be able to come together to marshal that kind of influence. That's on the one hand. On the other hand, and this perhaps goes particularly to us as Black Americans, you know, going back to the seat of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. The Prophet leveraged his, his status as a member of Arabian society, as a Qurashi, as a Hashemi, as an Arab. And he said to them, La as'alakuma alaihi ajran illa al-mawaddat fil qurba. I don't want any, uh, uh, any, uh, reward from you except the kind of love that you owe me as a matter of our familial bonds, all right? We Muslims in America have to capitalize on our family bonds and try to expand them so that more and more people can identify with our causes. We can't just be, you know, point whatever percent of the population isolated, separated, but don't influence outside our own community in terms of bringing other communities, all right? To see these realities for what they actually are. And so we have to leverage that. All right? We, 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 we have to understand that part of our mission is to transform this society. All right? And that goes back to the, one of the original questions that you raised, Sister Salima, in terms of why civic engagement, uh, is, is, is so important. All right? We have to, we have to bring, we have to, we have to become influential in the kind of pressure we're be, we're able to bring to bear on government policies. But we also have to change minds and hearts in this country. Because other people have been able to craft and, and sustain a narrative that have allowed these kinds of egregious, outrageous activities to fly beneath the radar of the average conscience of the average American. And you see that once these Americans, and by the way, look at how many non-Muslims there are at these, uh, uh, pro-Palestinian rallies. There are lots of them, all right? Once they come, TikTok comes in and shows the reality, once they start to see these realities, I say, whoa, 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 uh-uh, no, uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. We have to capitalize on that goodwill. All right? And we have to.
I, I'd like to come in. Just to say this, and, and I agree with you. I think that one of the points that was heard by the administration was not an appeal to, to their humanitarian concerns. It was a basic appeal to us as African-Americans. Uh, you know, I'm not so sure what the Biden administration, uh, has concerns about when it comes to the morality of this situation. But I know that they understand that African-Americans, African-American Muslims, but African-Americans in general have a much deeper sense of right and wrong and will respond to it, can be motivated by it. And that was very concerning. And so I agree with you 100%. We need to step in and utilize that and not jump behind a candidate too quickly. You know, not to, not to equate any of the beautiful sources that you have, uh, that you have referenced with something, uh, far less. But even Janet Jackson said, what have you done for me lately?
Alhamdulillah. I think it's a great time to pivot to another, um, question. And, um, we have just about, uh, 20 minutes left and we have some more questions to get through. So I'm going to try to get rapid fire these, these next, um, questions. My next question is for Brother Basir. America's policy towards the Muslim world hasn't really changed. Democrats started wars. Republicans started wars. Obama had the highest number of drone attacks on Muslim countries. The support for Israel has never wavered or changed in 75 years. Blacks are consistently funneled into the criminal justice system. Imam Jamil Al-Amin and others can still falsely, can still be falsely accused and imprisoned. Therefore, many Muslims believe that the forces behind the scenes are really in charge and that voting is not really how to make change. How should one address these concerns to increase voter turnout?
Okay, I'm going to try my best to get, get, get through it quickly. I, I want to say, you know, um, just listening to the conversation previously and, and bringing it all together, the Hadith of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, when he talks about, um, you know, that there will come a time when the Muslims will be, be weak. And it's like amazing just to see this, this, these words come into reality. Um, as we talk about the position that the world is in right now, we have to recognize the part that Muslims ourselves have played in it. And the Muslims are weak. The Muslims are weak. Look at what's happening to the Muslims in Palestine and all of those Muslims that are surrounding them. And look at what they're doing. Absolutely nothing, absolutely nothing. And then what we have to make sure of here in this country is that the same racism that they're experiencing there, that we do not tolerate that racism to take place here in our country, particularly towards Black Muslims. Because the racism that we're seeing, even when it comes to the media, I mean, we're discussing Palestine and we should discuss Palestine. We should. But at the same time, we should be discussing Congo and the Sudan and the issues in Africa and the issues here in America as well. What we're recognizing is that if we as a community don't figure out quickly how to be civically engaged, community engaged, and see, you know, the, uh, Dr. Jackson said, Islam acquires real-life meaning in a, in a, in, in, in concrete, everyday life. We, we can't keep on having Jumas with the, with the, with, with the, with the Khatib's is talking about Wuwuu and not, and not how that, and, and how, not how Islam is very much alive and how the right, the everyday young boy who put the gun down, coming to the mosque or, or bring it with him, coming from our mosque, you know what I'm saying? But at the same time, how does this, of what the message of what the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam gave, how can it be i- 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 implemented in everyday life? And the only way for us to do it is in service, is in service, is, is in us serving the community before we need something from them. Because for us who have tried to be good neighbors, it don't matter what Fox News say. They like, hey, listen, Khadijah, she take care of me during that Ramadan, she bringing me food over. When you establish this type of relationship with your neighbors, you don't have to worry about what the enemy would say. The issue is not the, what the Jews are getting away with. The issue is the weakness of Muslims. And what I really want to make clear is, is important for our leaders. The leaders are using Islam, some of them, to really oppress the people and not bring them freedom, freedom in mind, freedom in spirit, but using Islam to oppress the people, to oppress the people. So that's the, that's the, I forgot the question you asked, Salima, but I just wanted to make that point clear.
No, you definitely, you, you answered the question, how should we address these concerns um, as we increase voter turnout? And, um, thank you for everything that you shared because you definitely brought in.
Salima, you gotta go to the White House, Salima. You gotta go to the White House, okay? You gotta speak up for Black Muslims, okay? Because when we go into the White House, you and me and other Muslims who are here, we looked in the room and the majority was Indian, Pakistani and Arab. Okay? It was only a couple of Black people. All right? So when you talk about Muslim-American policy and Black Muslims are not at the table, I'm not talking about being invited to speak. I'm talking about at the table. I'm telling my brothers who are Indian, Pakistani, my brothers and sisters who are Arab, you can't talk about Muslim-American policy without making sure that Black Muslims are a part of it. And why is that important? Because what affect Black Muslims affect Black people, which affect other people, which affect this country. This country will never be successful until Black people can thrive in the very place that they built. And that's what people have to understand. So.
Amin, Amin, and I would say, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I am, um, no longer in the business of requesting to be at tables. I am creating my own table and that is what the Black Muslim Leadership Council is all about. Alhamdulillah. I'm going to go over to Sister Ayesha and then to Hajja Ayesha. So Sister Ayesha Mustafa. Um, many people feel disillusioned by the current political establishment and refuse to vote for the lesser of two evils. For some, this means not voting at all. For others, it means voting for independent candidates. How long do we submit to the two-party system? Some argue that voting for a third party is the same as voting for the candidate you don't want. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, in this, this, uh, card of this election, um, year, we've seen third parties being discussed seriously. You know, you had the No Labels Party, which gave some serious attention to selecting a third-party candidate. Of course, we have Dr. Cornel West, uh, and others, uh, who are outside of, of the two-party, uh, system. I think it's something we need to look at, it's not going to get done. Well, No Labor's already dropped. Dr. Cornel West is already in the, is still in the race. But it's something that we're going to have to look at seriously for the next cycle of elections. Uh, nowhere does it say that we have to be a two-party system. You know, we have these long-held, uh, allegiance. But remember, it was the Republicans that freed us from slavery. I remember when, um, Fannie Lou Hamer in Mississippi wanted the right to vote, it was the Democrats that would not give her a seat at the table to the point where in Mississippi, they had to develop the new, uh, Democratic Party, the new Freedom Democratic Party. And she was literally almost beaten to death for trying to, uh, participate in the new Freedom Democratic Party and getting us the right to vote. We have some of the most racist Democrats in the country. Uh, now it seems that they have huddled all into the Republican Party, but we can't depend on either one. We will have to look at another system. Is, is, uh, in, in the next cycle, we have to give it serious, uh, attention as well as identifying being at the, at the table, uh, at our own table to say who we think should be in that third-party run-up.
Alhamdulillah, thank you so much. Hajja Ayesha Jeffrey Sissay. In what ways can we draw upon the examples from the life of the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam to inform our political activism and decision-making in the modern context? How can we ensure that our political engagement is guided by principles of justice, equity, and compassion for all members of society? And how can we balance the need for political engagement with the imperative to uphold ethical and moral standards in our actions and in our decision-making as inspired by Islamic teachings?
Well, it's a very layered question, but a very simple answer is to learn our religion. And, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm simp, uh, it's not a, we're simplified. It's religious illiteracy that's the greatest threat to us. We also have to be able to, uh, accept that as we're developing that scholarship that's very specific to where we are, that we have to look into the world and go into the world and find that knowledge and bring it back. I am blessed to, I think, be in the company of some of the greatest Islamic scholars, really, of our time. That's in West Africa. But it's not going to be convenient. And we have to acknowledge, not that we always have to look outside of ourselves, but we're evolving and we have an elevated scholarship in the development of our communities. in the development of our communities, like we do to be a physician or to be a teacher or to be another profession. So we have to begin to, I think, look, have a long-term outlook, begin to raise leaders from amongst our own ranks. There's going to be a trade-off that we might not see what we expect in the, in the, in the moment. But we have to be satisfied that we have to begin somewhere to develop this kind of, of scholarship. We have to begin to develop leaders that reflect our values. We have to begin to develop institutions where, that support that leadership and begin to move the needle forward in our own community. Again, I'm talking about facing and I'm talking about a really disruptive, if you will, approach to, to change, to social change. And because we intersect our blackness with Islam, we have the promise. We have the promise and we keep, for me, it appears that we keep wanting to fit in as opposed to creating, as you have claimed today, creating a table, creating not just thinking out of the box, but creating a whole new box with which to transform where we stand. So it's critical, I can't emphasize enough how important it is that our literacy of this dean for the time we live in is a promise from Allah. These people exist in the world and they're here with us. We just have to turn our faces and bring our communities to consciousness that these things are possible, that they cannot, there's not a trade-off for them. Honestly, it's not knowing how to emulate the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And that's where the change begins.
Amin, alhamdulillah. I would like to let everyone know at this time, please, you can start adding your questions to the chat because I'm going to ask the final question right now and then we're going to go to questions from the audience. So please, any questions that you have, this is the time for you to add them to the chat. And I asked my colleagues, Dr. Salam and Sister Akanki to send me those, send me those, those questions that you select in, in, in our run-up show. Alhamdulillah, this has been a great conversation and we got in most of my questions. Some questions I didn't have to ask because you already gave, you know, mention to those things. Dr. Sherman Jackson, you mentioned reparations and that we had a question around, you know, reparations and are we owed them? And sort of what our history has been in this country. Black Muslims have been here since the transatlantic slave trade and, 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 and many of the slaves that came here were, were Muslims. And, and they brought their faith with them to, to America. And, and though some were, their religious choice was suppressed for many years, we reverted back to Islam as a means of salvation. I know my parents converted to Islam during the civil rights era in the, in the seventies. And all of my siblings, we were born into Islam. And alhamdulillah, we, we, we have, we have a story that, that is important, is an important piece to the fabric of American society. So I just wanted to offer that, but, but what I want to ask all of the panelists to, to answer this question. And that is, without making a personal endorsement, what would you say to the question that I'm going to ask? Because this is a question that I get often, people call me from all across the country. And that question is, for those who are here, who may want to know the answer for those who may watch this video later. If you're trying to decide who to vote for in this election, should I vote in this election? What, what advice would you offer? And I know this is, this is kind of a tricky question. I'm asking you not to make an endorsement, but you know, let's process that together for a second because it's an important question. And, you know, many people are not ready, even including myself, we're not ready to really answer that question because so many things remain undetermined at this time and the options just don't seem to be, you know, acceptable. So again, for the individual, the community member that might be exploring what to do as it relates to, to making a decision about who to vote for in the general election based upon their, you know, morals, their values, the needs of their community. I'm going to start with Dr. Sherman Jackson. What, what advice would you offer? And please, one minute, because we have to go to audience questions.
Oh, you didn't say one minute, no.
Rapid fire, rapid fire.
Uh, to, to, to be honest with you, look, I, I think like you said, things are still in flux. I think that in terms of the leading candidates, both are problematic. And I think that many Muslims have a, a problem even imagining themselves voting for either. And I think that this is again, precisely why we need functional discourses. Because maybe I could be convinced to go one way or the other. Based not on whether I like this candidate or even what I feel particularly about their morals, et cetera, but based on what kinds of healing or what kind of service they're going to bring to the interest of Muslims, number one, and then to the broader society, number two. Look, I, I, I don't know. And I think it's okay not to know. And I think that it's sometimes worse to claim that you know what you don't know. And I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm still conflicted, you know, and I'm reminded and I'll end right here. Sister Salima, you know, I, I, I'm reminded, sometimes you just don't know.
It's okay.
It's like, you know, when, 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 when Musa came back to Harun and asked him, why didn't you stop them? Why didn't you stop them from taking that calf, that golden calf? He said, I, I thought that you would say that I divided Bani Israeel. And otherwise, I didn't really know how to balance, you know, keeping the community together and stopping them at the same time. So sometimes we land in places where we don't quite know. And this is where, this is where, you know, it's those extra prayers at night, it's that extra fasting. It's that, it's that, it's that ability, you know, to, to try and purify our souls and, and clarify our minds, you know, that may bring us to a point where we can, where we can make a decision that Insha Allah, Insha Allah, we'll be pleasing to Allah. But right now, I don't know, I don't really know what to advise Muslims other than to remain in, 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 in loving, mutual, respectful conversation. Don't be so sure of your view that, you know, you, because simply they, they express something that's not consistent with yours. Be humble, be open and understand at the end of the day, we don't get anything out of putting the right candidate in the White House while our own community is lying on the ground bleeding out the head. Because we've destroyed it. So we just need to be, keep that in mind, Insha Allah.
Insha Allah. Jazakallah Khair, Dr. Dr. Jackson. Really quickly before I go on to Haja Ayesha, I want to ask, for those who are putting questions in the chat, please let us know who your question is directed to, Insha Allah. Thank you so much. Your, your answer was very fair, Dr. Jackson, and I appreciate it. It, it's helpful to even me because I don't know. Haja Ayesha Jeffrey Cee Say, how would you answer that question? What advice would you have to offer?
I think it's consistent with what we just heard. I also think we need to free ourselves from the shackles of the binary choice and to think to eternity. That is the capacity that we have to bring into our thinking, meaning free ourselves from immediate gratification, expectations that are unrealistic in terms of how change happens. And really face in, like, I'm willing to put this up in the L column. Because I see, y'all ain't gonna like this Trump walking to the White House and Joe Biden has just really for me shredded any possibility for me to justify morally how to support him. The data is also saying though, if Allah would just give us another, a leader that can inspire hope, a third party can take this election. I'm still looking for her. I'm still looking for her. And so my point is, in the meantime, down here in the valley, we should begin to turn inward and do the kinds of things we've heard about tonight, knowing that if I don't live to see tomorrow, I have planted the seed. It starts with one, the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. It was one, it's two billion of us today. We should be satisfied with knowing that if we are inspired with vision, insight, if we are capable of dreaming, that we can make this change. The change will happen. And somehow we're still trying to fit ourselves into the existing paradigm. That's the mistake I think we're making. Is that we're not really, really ready to shatter the familiar, even though it doesn't serve us, even though it doesn't serve. And so again, I'm going to underscore, and this has been my, my, my message, is that we have to think to eternity, we have to know we have a promise. Everybody ain't coming, Dr. Sherman. And we have to be satisfied that Allah, as soon as we take the first right step, Allah, all the help from all four cardinal directions. You're not gonna know her name, you're not gonna know his name. But if you start with the right message, really, is this, is ours now, Allah will send the help. And know that what we start today can be finished by my tenth great-granddaughter, if we have them.
Absolutely.
Amin, alhamdulillah, thank you so much.
Don't be scared, don't be scared.
Alhamdulillah.
I just really want to get this in on reparations. I'm, I had mixed feelings about it, I know. Doctor has spoken to it and all of us probably agree.
Yeah, you said I did, I don't know, we're talking about that, but anyway.
I, I said, well.
Oh, maybe it was Sister Ayesha Mustafa. Was it you, Sister Ayesha Mustafa that mentioned, it was Sister Ayesha Mustafa, my apologies.
I just picked up on that, forgive me.
That's all right, it's fine, it's all good.
Idea about it, yeah, but the idea about it, I, I, I have mixed emotions. I'm just trying, I go between like Dr. the great American journalist, Ogeri, who is just enraged at trying to fix America instead of fixing ourselves. And Rihanna, like, better have my money, do you know what I'm saying? So that being said, I think that we need to again, take that as part of an ongoing, if you will, confrontation. We do deserve a compensation. This country does not exist without us, without our intellectual capital. We weren't just taken for our physical prowess, it was about the intellectual capital to develop this nation. So I'm, I'm going back to continue that fight, but also let's continue to face in and do the work that I mentioned earlier.
Alhamdulillah, sometimes I don't know because I feel like when it comes to reparations, I feel like, you know, that what has happened to, to black people, what happened to us during four hundred years of genocide is irreparable because our people still suffer from, from, from the, the repercussions of slavery to this day. And so, okay, I'm going to move on. We have just about ninety seconds for each of you to answer the question. Dr. Alia, go, what would you, what advice would you offer?
I think of something that Linda Sarsoor said to me right before Donald Trump was elected. It was maybe the day before. And she said that she was going to have boots on the ground no matter who was in office, but that it would likely be more, more palatable to protest with the, with, with the Clinton campaign than it would with the Clinton administration than it would with the Trump administration because he wouldn't listen. We're in a situation where I share the views of the co-panelists in that I find neither candidate to be palatable. And I struggle deeply with the thought that I would ever be able to cast a, a vote for someone who is complicit in genocide. But I'm also not going to be able to support the convicted felon, this rapist. So in a binary system, I feel as though I'm left without a choice and that many of us are. But a choice will have to be made. And like Dr. Sherman, it may not be that we can say specifically what to do in this election. We need to ask first, what is it that we want? And can we best work with in order to get that? And that means our options to be individual and to be respected in that way.
Alhamdulillah, thank you so much, Dr. Alia. Sister Ayesha Mustafa.
Assalamualaikum. Right now, in this circumstances that we find ourselves in, I think it's appropriate to just let them sweat. You know, the Dearborn, Michigan really put heat under the fire of the Democrats. And everybody stopped and taken, took notice because if they lose Dearborn, they're gonna lose Michigan. And they start saying, oh, they started sweating. And then they said, well, we need to go talk Dearborn. And then Dearborn said, we don't need a campaign speech, don't come up here with a campaign speech. Come up here with some concrete ideas that we can address. Dearborn made them sweat.
And it's still making them sweat.
And these students on these campuses have thrown themselves into the throes and they are making them sweat. Muslims and non-Muslims, you know, we're going back to Kent State days, we're going back to Jackson State days when they really felt a passion about their country going in the wrong direction and we young folk gotta do something about it. You know, Kent State, what was seven to eight students was murdered, were shot dead. Jackson State, two students were shot dead in the protest about this country's direction and war. So I, I, we don't, we don't have to show our hand right now to either one of them, let them sweat. But Donald Trump is, we, we comparing people, right? Not, again, not endorsing, but we just comparing the tactics of people. When somebody go get a felon in my color and bring them on stage and then tell you, he likes me because I'm gonna be a felon. He likes me because I got on a, a, a prison suit. He likes me because I'm a thug now. He's referring to the basis of the law of our people. Hey, I'm a thug like you and I like tennis shoes. Then we have the other one who is going to give the whole house to Israel and let my babies be suffering. We don't talk about reparations, but he gave twenty billions to Israel and another thirty-four billion to Ukraine. What about my babies and what we did? What about them? So I think we have to be close, live, whisper among ourselves and don't even let them know what direction we're going in, whether we're gonna stay at home or whether we're gonna get up and vote. But the one thing we have to remember is we need a country. We need somewhere to live and destroying the country that we're in is not necessarily going to help anybody. If I want to help Palestine, I need a base to work from. I need some kind of resources to help Palestine rebuild. And I, I, I pull my strength from the Palestinians. I know we have some other hotspots around the world. We're going to the Congo, we're going to the Sudan. We gotta decide, how do you go into a, a civil war versus to a, a genocide for another people that have invaded one people? What's the difference between civil war? You know, we knew. We, we knew the children and Yemen were starving even before Ukraine. Our thing to the children, I'm gonna be short. Man, our response to the children in Ukraine was, you need to go put on blue and yellow. Tell every baby in, in, in Yemen to go put on blue and yellow so the cameras would pick them up. Because the only thing they see is the blue and yellow children of Ukraine, the little ice, icing and girls. So we need a country. If we don't put a leadership on it, it's gonna run them up, it's gonna hit a iceberg. And not only are we gonna suffer, but we have nothing left to reach out to other people. So let them sweat.
Alhamdulillah. And I want to just remind everyone, and I'll talk, I'll give the, our website at the end. BMLC has a, not only a domestic policy agenda, but also a foreign policy agenda. And we're already speaking with campaigns in, in the administration to advocate for those policies. Please check them out on our policy advocacy page. BlackMuslimLeadership.org is, is where you can find it. Insha Allah, Brother Bashir.
Alhamdulillah, I'll, I'll go quickly to some things that I think that we can do. Well, let me say, if you're not, if you're not voting for Dr. West, I don't know what you're doing. I don't know how morally you could not vote for Dr. West, I'm gonna just say that. And I know that's not BM, uh, BMLC's, BMLC is a, so, okay. So we know that this is just me talking right here, morally.
So we started the question by saying, please do not make an endorsement.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, sister. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm speaking as Bashir right now to say morally, I don't know how you couldn't vote for one of these people that's inside of, I mean, I don't know how that's not clear, a person that's, anyway. Um, second thing is, Dr. Jackson, man, I would love to do a book with you, man. You know, we can. Um, second thing is, Dr. Jackson, man, I would love to do a book with you, man, you know, we can talk about what's happening as far as activism, and then how do you apply it on a scholarly level, so that people who are battling with themselves on how to get more community engaged, for those who need a little bit more spiritual guidance or proof that what they're doing is worship. I think that could be a really powerful, powerful, uh, book, I just wanted to, to put that out there, um. And Inshallah, and I'll, I'll reach out to you, Inshallah. Uh, one of the sisters asked a question, um, you have, even on this call right now, you have sisters who are here, you have, uh, council, councilwoman, uh, Paris Miller, who's here. She's the councilwoman, you got other sisters who are interested in running for council. You have Muslims right now who are doing the work on a local level that we need to support. When I ran for city council, and I'm sure my other councilmembers who are here could attest to it, the lack of support I got from Muslims is laughable. I couldn't believe, I, and I had two matches in my area, and I didn't get neither one of their support when I was running for city council. So, you know, we talk about, we talk about other people, but the reality is, we gotta do a better jidab of supporting, put our energy behind it, putting the power of Muslim journal behind it, putting a scholarship of Dr. Jackson and, and, and Dr. Lee and Sister Hajaj Aisha, we have to, we have to put that energy behind those who are doing the work in the community. So, to the sister who asked the question, what's the best office? Run for your local school board, run for council, become a block club president, right? Start getting involved, you, we talk about dow, a form of pamphlets, pamphlets, but the best dow is feeding the people. The best dow is giving medicine to those who are sick, the best dow, dow is service. When we engage in service, then guess what's gonna happen? You don't gotta ask for people to vote, 'cause they gonna give it to you. If you come to Cleveland and talk to the people here, they gonna say, oh, that's Bashir who built that park, who paid for my grandmother's funeral, who stopped the violence. Oh, yeah, and he happens to be Muslim. That's, that's the type of, and we have to feed the people, and I think that's very important, so as we look at what's best for America, understand that there's a corporate America, and there is an everyday, everyday person. It's an everyday person, corporate America is what runs America. And it's hard to break through that corporation. It's hard to break through that corporation, but don't focus on the federal and international, that stuff is important. But it's the local things that can have phenomenal impact. Who's your local judge, who's the city judge, who's the county judge? You know what I'm saying? These are the things that, that's important for our success. So once again, that's why what Sister Salima is doing, Sister Kante is doing is so powerful, because we either at the table or we on the menu. And what we've been able to see now is that we've been on the menu. It's time to have our own table, like Salima talked about, and we need, I'll close with this, I'll close with this. We need to have our scholars and our imams and the elders. We have to build a better intergenerational, this bridge between us. Because what's happening is, in our division, they go to the elders, and then, you know, with all due respect, I ain't saying no elders who are here. I'm just saying.
You can.
Twenty-five, twenty-five dollars shouldn't go that, that, that far away. Fifty dollars, a hundred dollar check for Ramadan banquet shouldn't be enough for you to turn on your people, I mean, I mean, come on, man. It's the crumbs, that's why we have to utilize our land, and we have to develop, and we have to get our own dollars, so we can stop being so poor and impoverished in our mindset and selling out for crumbs. When we can get, we can bake the whole bing pot, we know how to do that. So I just wanna start with myself and say, Dr. Jackson, I'm a student of yours, Imam Nadine, Brother Bilal, who's here, like, I'm a student of yours. Please put me to work, allow me to serve you, allow me to learn from you, and even our elder sisters as well, who's been doing the work. But we gotta build our bridge, because we gotta protect one another, uh, that's our, I think that will bring our success, so thank you so much.
Alhamdulillah.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, um, I'm, I'm sorry, did you hear something, Dr. Jackson, um?
No, no, just, 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 just allow us to learn from you as well, because we can learn from you as well, and we need to learn from you.
I call it mentoring, you come in as a mentor and a learner.
And, and, what, what Hajja Aisha said, I just wanna, just wanna underscore it, you know? And, 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 and this is, this is consistent with the Sira of our, of our, with the Sunnah of our Prophet. Alayhi Salam, we have to think transgenerationally. One of the things that saps our resolve is to look out at the landscape and to conclude that it's hopeless in our lifetime. It may be, but that doesn't mean it's hopeless, period. So, we lay the foundation as strongly as we can, hopefully provide the coming generations with something solid to stand upon, and then we put our Tawakkul in Allah. So we have to think transgenerationally. Right? The fact that we may not be able to achieve it in our lifetime does not mean that we give up the struggle. We think transgenerationally, Inshallah.
Amin, I always like to say that we're doing the work today that will leave an imprint for beyond our days on this earth, and, and what you're saying is just so on point, um, I want to, I'm gonna take this time to thank all of the panelists, but we have some questions from the audience, and I want to also thank the audience. You guys stay here, we've been here almost two hours now. These questions that I'm going to ask, we have to, out of respect for the audience that came here to hear from us and participate in this conversation, we have to be brief in the answer to these questions. Folks are just going to start leaving, otherwise, and I want to get through as many questions as possible, Inshallah. Thank you to the panelists, you guys are just Mashallah, you, I've learned so much this evening, and may Allah increase you and, and suffice you and, and, and bless you for, and put Barakah in, in, in all of your works, Amin. Num- number one question from the audience is from, is for Sister Ayesha K. Mustafa. Would you comment on the observation by the Imam W.D. Muhammad, by Imam W.D. Muhammad, as it relates to the discussion this evening? Quote, Imam W.D. Muhammad, twenty years ago, I recognized there was a need for the Honorable Elijah Muhammad's spirit and the spirit of Dr. King or the Civil Rights Movement to come together because they were spirits, uh, uh, spirits of one life force. They should be together, not separated by a one-sided vision.
Yes, ma'am, you, we know the narrative of divide and conquer, right? So, uh, that, that has been used against us even in our, uh, pre-Muslim era, when we were just African Americans in the struggle, uh, the divide and conquer. However, uh, we also know that it, it takes quite a bit for us to come to the same point at the same time with so many things going on. Uh, the Honorable Elijah Muhammad had a, a, a idea and a, and a theory and a process. Uh, Dr. King had an idea and a theory and a process, but we in the Nation of Islam days, we always said to ourselves, you know, Dr. King got as far as he did because of the carrot and the stick. Doctor, Doctor King was the carrot, Elijah Muhammad was the stick. If y'all don't accept Dr. King, then we're gonna give you something harder to deal with. And so a lot of good-hearted Caucasians began to support Dr. King, but we don't think that he would've gotten that support unless they saw the stick. We have so many groups, and they didn't all agree with each other, but they all contributed to the process, you know, at the, the Nation of Islam, we had SNCC, we had COR, we had the Universal Negro Improvement Association, UNEA, we had FCLC, we had the Panthers. All of them had a purpose, and they were trying to help us. And they had different ideas and, and things to go about it, but at the end game, we had the same, we wanted the same things. So, what the Imam was telling us, not fight with each other, when we have the same goals. And, and the, the religion tell us, go through different doors, do not go through the same gates. You know, we is in a race in different avenues. So we, we, we're not gonna always be one group, we're gonna have several groups, we might have multiple groups. But what we don't do is try to trip over each other and try to trip each other up, we don't become the enemy to ourselves. And we're gonna have these different avenues, and if you have a strength, and someone else has a, a strength in a particular way, then go ahead and do that, as many, uh, positions that you have that people can be elected to, you might have multiple groups to target those elections, you know, you're not gonna have the, the, uh, the national leaders, you have the state leaders, you have the local leaders, we need leaders in Jackson, Mississippi, just on the ground in the one city. We could use up all the energy, day and night, in just this one city that is predominantly eighty percent African-American, and it's falling apart.
Alhamdulillah, thank you so much, Sister Ayesha, Ayesha, I hope that, um, whoever, um, that that, uh, question was, that question I think was well answered, so I hope that the person who submitted it, um, received it well. This next question, it's a very, it's, it's actually six questions in one, so I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, present it as more of a statement and something for us to all sort of ponder and focus on, um, because we don't have the time to talk about each, each of these points. Um, uh, brother, uh, uh, well, um, Alji Crivins III, um, offered, how do we, one, build a Muslim grassroots network focused on civic engagement to educate, inform, and politically mobilize the Muslim community? Um, I, I, to answer that question, I think that that's what BMLC is attempting to do, as well as Mana. And so we're going to share, you know, uh, Mana can be found at manajustice.org, BMLC, blackmuslimleadership.org. Um, and, and you can learn more about that on our pages. How do we build a unified policy agenda locally, state by state, and nationally? BMLC has a policy agenda, Sister Dr. Alia, um, posted the, um, the link to our policy agenda. Three, build, build, how do we build po- political training synergy state by state to promote and protect Muslim interests, introduce legislation, and elect Muslim elected officials? That is all the work of our C4 arm, so follow BMLC to learn more information about that. Make sure you, you're on our listserv, and if you registered for this event today, we'll, we'll keep you, um, in our email list. Um, how do we train Muslims to be community organizers? Literally the work of BMLC, we have a, um, a civic engagement workshop, educational workshop, uh, on June the twenty-ninth, uh, that you can register for, um, and we'll be putting, we'll be promoting that event immediately after this one, promoting that workshop. Um, how do we build talking points on all issues, kitchen table, um, issues? Re- how do we raise money to be a lobbying influence, um, observation and participation? Dean Ellis Lamb is about the action of improving the lives of community and this, and this life and the hereafter, Amin. Um, thank you so much, um, brother Alji. Um, the next question, how can we remind Muslims that Palestine is not the only issue in this election? Protecting voting rights, women's rights, and stopping white supremacy? I'm gonna give that question to brother Bashir.
You know, uh, Dr. Jackson, exactly, I was sitting there thinking, oh, that's a great. You know, uh, I, I think this is a really important point, while at the same time, you know, while at the same time, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, while at the same time not, uh, decreasing the importance at all. 'Cause we wanna make sure that, you know, we are very sensitive to what's happening in Gaza, um. Um, so I think it's important for us to, 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 that what's happening in Gaza, the genocide there is no different than what's happening, i- it's, it's really the same hand. When I, when I was running for mayor, it was a, a Jewish-backed paper that put, that made, uh, uh, this whole caricature of me, you know, saying that if I were to win, I was gonna put, have all the women in burkas. Uh, and this was during a time that there was a conflict between Afghanistan and, and America. So, we have to recognize that the thing, I mean, look, look at, look at Congress, they recently invited Benjamin Netanyahu to come and address the Joint Congress. So we know that if you wanna make a change anywhere else in the world, and Sister Ayesha said this, you, you make the change here from America. So we recognize that, so I just wanna quickly say that we don't wanna not take away from what's happening in Gaza, because what's happening in Gaza is all tied into the criminal justice system here. Look at every, look at every major system here in America, and, and look and see who are at the top of its leadership. And then also look and see how much of that leadership of those companies are in support of what, of, of, of what's happening in Israel. And you're gonna see how all this stuff is tied in. We thought Kanye was crazy, but he knew exactly what he's talking, I ain't saying he's not crazy, but we, he knew what he was talking about. He was, he was, he was, he was saying some things that, that made perfect sense, so all of these things are important, what's happening across the seas is important, what's happening here, and even though it seems far, it's so close.
Alhamdulillah, and the person who wrote this question. I wanna add one thing. I'm sorry, before we move off, I wanna add one thing. Um, I don't know how many people are aware that support for Palestine is support for black people, because one of the things that the BMLC is very focused on is our commitment to the Black diaspora. And so we have people that look like anybody on this panel, right there, um, in Palestine, in Jerusalem, feet away from Masjid Al-Aqsa, sometimes who can't even access Masjid Al-Aqsa, the African quarter is right there. And so when we're fighting for Palestine, we are not ignoring black people in the diaspora. We are including the most ignored branch of black people in the diaspora.
But, but I, but I do wanna say though, doctor, that this is very important, and that as we do stand up for Gaza and talk, I do wanna warn my brothers and sisters who are Palestinians, who are Arabs, who are Indian, who are Pakistani, and we love you all. But when we talk about our issues, don't tell us, you know, your issues is in the back burner right now, no, 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 no.
Oh, I'm one hundred percent there with you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm there one hundred percent with you, because we do have issues that we have to focus on, and that's why BMLC has a very important domestic policy, and we have our foreign policy. But we cannot, we cannot put out the fires in other people's houses that are burned.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that I highlight that point, and for the leaders who are on this call, I need for you to, to really hear what I'm saying. And that is, as we are discussing our, our issues, and, and BMLC has it, and that's why we are following this leadership. But what we're finding amongst leadership of other communities, as well as their young people, that when we mention our issues here in America, they're, they are responding with, well, right now, the only issue is what's happening in Palestine, and if you're not talking about that, then you must be, you know, on your way to heaven. Now, it's like, no, 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 because the issues that we've been dealing with has been longer than, we've, we've been dealing with these for a long time. So we, we have to be able to present it collectively, and not like one is more important than the other, it's all collective.
Absolutely, and I would just add that the person who, um, wrote this question, they offered protecting voting rights, women's, women's rights, and, and stopping white supremacy. I would also add to that, I had a question on this, but I, I didn't get a chance to, to ask it, but I would also just like to uplift the fact that, you know, public safety and gun violence is something that is impacting Muslims in urban communities. In Philadelphia, in my city, there was a mass shooting at an Eid Out Fithers celebration. Three people were shot, it was traumatizing, it was awful, and, you know, Muslim youth continue to be involved in the gun violence in, 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 in large cities like Philadelphia, where Islam is a growing religion. You know, um, so, so that's something that we need to pay attention to, healthcare with the focus on black, um, maternal health, um, and mental health, um, uh, education, housing, affordable housing, and, you know, um, definitely, um, economic opportunity and, and environmental justice even, and criminal justice reform, these are all things that we need to be focusing on as well. And no one thing is more important than the other. Um, we have to also say this, black Muslims make up the largest proportion of the Muslim-American community. So to say that for the American Muslim community, that one issue is, is, is greater than, than the issues that are impacting Muslims in urban communities, predominantly black Muslims, is, is, is really a form of supremacy, and I'll just leave that there. Um, the next question, uh, but can we go on, I wanna ask the, the, the other, um, we, we do need to go on, because we have a couple more questions, and we're supposed to wrap up in eight minutes. Um, Inshallah, um, brother Fleming El Amin, um, asked the question, um, and so you're gonna have to help me with this. It's, um, can we discuss the benefits of the Medina Charter to our discussion today? I'm not sure what he, what, what's meant by that.
Well, Fikhatul Medina is what he's talking about, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please, please, because I'm not, I'm not, um.
Oh, he's talking about, he's talking about the charter of, of, of Medina, when he went to Medina, he.
Oh, I see.
Charter with the inhabitants of Medina. Uh, and I think that quite frankly, uh, I mean, there are many things that are important about the Wathika of Medina, but I think that the one in this context, um, uh, one of the lessons that we can take from that is that, you know, for a long time, um, and I've been a Muslim, you know, more than forty-five years, I mean, uh, I converted when I was three. That was a joke, man, all right.
Did you really? It's like, wait, what?
I love it. Anyway, um, um, there, there has been a notion, um, that everything that we do as a Muslim community, especially politically, and I'm not saying everybody holds this, but that, there is. but that there is an undercurrent of this, should be or has to be exclusively for the benefit of Muslims. And what the, 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 the Wathika of Medina establishes is that the Prophet is essentially, Ali Salatu Wasalam, saying this.
I'm here for all of them.
We want to establish circumstances that enable us to pursue our interest in establishing, sustaining, and perpetuating a Muslim community. If other non-Muslims benefit from that arrangement, then so be it. We want to establish peace for everybody in Medina, justice for everybody in Medina, security for everybody in Medina. Of course, the Muslim community will benefit from that, but so will the Jewish community, so will the pagan community, and so be it. So we don't have to be zero sum in our thinking. I mean, I mean, I mean, to the, to the, to the fact that we think that, well, anything that we do, anything that we promote can only be for the benefit of Muslims. That's not coming from the Sira of Islam, Ali Salatu Wasalam.
Thank you so much, Doctor Sherman. I'm gonna move on, um, to, uh, Dr. Zahira Himfo Azim's question. She says, Assalamualaikum, I am interested to know what level of political office do you feel Muslims should begin? I think that, uh, Bashir touched on this earlier. Do, what levels of, of public office do you feel Muslims should begin if they are interested in running for office? School board, city council legislators, especially if it is a city where no Muslim has ever been elected into any, um, level of office? Um, Brother Bashir touched on that a little bit and, you know, he says, school board, city council legislators. You know, you can run for any office, honestly. You, you don't have to feel like you're, you're precluded from running from, from anything. If, if you educate yourself on the issues, if you have a track record of doing work in the community, if you have people that will write checks for you, if you have, uh, the, the ability to compel people to vote for you, you don't have to think there. I know people who ran for Congress that, that never did politics at all, but they won because they were able to build, you know, a good platform for themselves and, 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 and get the support that they needed to, to, to win office. So, you know, I, I mean, just if, if you're interested, you can, you know, um, you can start like school board, city council, um, state reps. Uh, you can do those things, um, but, but you can, honestly, you can do anything. You don't, you shouldn't ever, and, and don't, you know, I always say it takes a lot of courage to run for office. Um, and, and I'm always so proud of people who have the courage to put themselves out there in that way and, and, and to, you know, um, uh, run for office, but don't limit yourself. And, and even if you run for office, um, and you don't win, you know, keep running, you will win eventually, Insha Allah. Um, so.
Can I add to that, Salima? I think it's extremely important for us to emphasize it. It's, it's a thing where, you know, you see Islam and you don't see the Muslims. The Republicans have been very strategic in terms of how they're deconstructing democracy and deconstructing, if you will, governance. It had started thirty years ago with a strategic plan to go in systematically to local governance. Because that's where the greater impact is on our lives every single day. That's where the power actually lies. So they have, they have a strategic plan. And I think this is where our gaps are, that sometimes we're in such a position of reacting that we don't realize, once again, when we come back to a comprehensive assessment of where our needs are, see what has been working, no matter whose hands it's been in. And the most effective to date has been the Republican agenda to transform over the last twenty-five years. And I know we've been in survival mode and it was hard to think about it, but I think we've come out of that where we can think twenty-five years ahead. We don't have to, and still be concerned about getting back home at the end of the day, but it shouldn't be prohibitive. It's not prohibitive now, if you know what I mean, because we have.
Sister Salima, uh, if, if, if it's not, it's fine.
What did you say? I'm sorry, Doctor Jackson.
I just wanted to add in a, a small addendum to what, uh, uh, Hajj Ay.
Sure.
She said?
Sure, yeah, I just think it's very important.
In terms of the Republican strategy, I'm gonna say something here that in some ways may feel like it's going against the grain of, of everything that we've been saying, but it's not really. I want to say to all those Muslims, I mean, the Prophet said, everybody will find easy that which they were created for. Not everybody, not everybody is to be directly involved in civic engagement.
Right.
I, you can be a linguist, okay? The Republicans going back thirty-five years ago, they embarked upon a campaign to craft new language.
Exactly.
To affect the way that people were thinking. So they're the ones who came up with things like right to work state. Relief, this had massive impact. You might not be out there on the front lines, you're just a linguist sitting back, thinking about how you can craft a language to enhance your community standing and.
And codify all of that.
Codifying behavior. So, 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 so everybody, everybody has a role. You don't have to be out on the front lines. You can contribute to your community in the capacity that you contribute. In fact, we should not forget, it's just important, just as important for us to be good husbands, good wives, good mothers, good fathers, as it is, all that other stuff that we're doing.
And was central to their plan.
Not, not, not only that, not only that, you, you, just, just, just the kind word that you offer in a context of conflict that resolves the dispute between your brother and sister. Huge, huge, don't forget that.
Insha Allah, that, 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 that's so important, especially the part where you said, it's just as important for us to be good husbands.
That's how comprehensive and detailed a strategic plan they have in place. It covered every one of those points, every one of those needs in the communities, every one of those strategic pillars that change and, and define life. They were defining and are defining American life, redefining it and taking it back. I'm just saying, this is, this is where we need to begin to take our thinking. We don't have a think tank. I don't know, was there a black think tank, which you have the capacity to become?
We, we're, we're working towards, um, you know, that think tank, um, yeah, we're going to do that. And so, uh, that's something that we're planning to do, um, probably not this year because the election year and it's so busy.
Just very quickly, are you familiar with the Black Futures Lab?
No, I'm sorry. So you have to. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the last three questions, Insha Allah. I'm, I don't want to hold people up for prayer, my group is gay, where I am. So, you know, uh, let me get to these last three questions for either Brother Bashir Jones or Professor, or Professor Sherman Jackson. Historically, within our communities, our inability to settle on views and be decisive has resulted in slow and problematic engagements with Zionists and interfaith alliances without consent with Muslim groups who will be affected. In a post-October seven world, how do we establish situation rooms without having to wait for long and untimed consensus from, eh, eh, from, from everyone? Whoever wants to take that, one minute, please.
Sheesh. I mean, it's, it's, it's a pretty big question. I mean, let me just say that, say this, I mean, um, I don't know the concrete answer to your question. Um, but I don't think that a lot of these questions have concrete answers. Cause when you say how, you're talking about a detailed plan. I think that what we have to get comfortable with is this. You know, when Michael Jordan gets the ball, I've said this before, he has no idea of how he's gonna make the shot. Alright, he just knows that he's here, the defender's there, the basket's there. He gets in motion, that's the important thing. And then his training and his instincts take over, alright? And this is one of the reasons why it's important that alongside all the civic engagement, alright? We keep up our practice of Islam, alright? That is going to refine our nafs, alright? Because once we get in engagement, once we get in motion, alright? That's what's gonna drive our action. So, you know, we have the Quran and the Sunnah in fourteen hundred years. And by the way, I think it's, I think, I think we have to go, I shouldn't say this at the end of the day, but I'll say it anyway. We have the Quran and we have the Sunnah and we have how the Sahabah processed it even after the Prophet died. They were faced with new situations. They showed us how we can process what the Prophet taught to address new situations. So we have that, we have the, the refinement of ourselves, we get in motion, and we put our trust in Allah.
We also historically, historically have to see how the Jews and the blacks have always had like this relationship. And a lot of our Arab and brothers and sisters are asked the question like, why aren't more black people more involved? You know, why don't we see the tie, the bridge between the, the two situations? But whether it was the music industry, right? We was, we was always had the civil rights movement. We had, you know.
You had the relationship between the Jewish and the Muslim community from the time of the Prophet, so the examples are not for real.
Thank you, Sister Ajay, thank you so much. So what's important is, is for us to understand is that, 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 the, the Jewish community within our community, as far as African-Americans, have always had some type of relationship with us. And that's why I'm telling my brothers and sisters from the Palestinian community, like, yo, man, most of the businesses in our community is Palestinians. In my community here in Cleveland, so there's no reason why we shouldn't have better relationships. So it starts there. It starts with having a good relationship, treating your neighbors well. During Ramadan and Eid in my neighborhood, the Muslim gas station owners, we partner up and we give out turkeys at their gas stations.
Yeah. And you said something earlier about spending time together.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can ignore, however, Bashir, you know, the longstanding, and it's sort of reached a crescendo now, of a very aggressive Zionist activity within that community. And the impact that it's had on us both here and abroad. Yeah, I know, I know, I know a major, I know a major academic, I won't say any name, major academic died a few years ago. Um, um, who was of the opinion that the rise of Islam in black America is problematic, alright? Because those people are more likely to identify with the Palestinians than they are with themselves.
Exactly, and that's why Doctor Jackson.
There, we can't ignore.
No, no, you're right. But along with it, yes, sir, yes, I don't mean, I, I, my, my.
Okay, okay. Questions, I'm sorry.
My internet might be a little bit off, but I just want to say this quickly. In, in my community in Cleveland, the Jewish Federation set up something called the Hebrew Free Loan, where they give out loans to the community without absolutely no interest. So yes, the Zionist part, we know that that's clear. But there's also a sense of community service that the Jews have done, that the Catholics have done, that have been really impactful on the black community in ways that we would have thought black Muslims should have been.
The great news is that Allah tells us exactly that. They are not all the same. Among them are those who stand at night rehearsing the signs of Allah, they believe in Allah on the last day, and they vibe with each other and doing goodness. So we don't have any blanket judgments of anybody like that.
Absolutely, Alhamdulillah. So that, I mean, we're recording this and we're gonna make this, we're gonna make this available if, if the panelists are amenable on YouTube because this is just such an important conversation and we want more people who were in here today to be able to benefit from it, Insha Allah. Question for Bashir Jones from Sister Paris Miller Fauci. For many Muslims, political and civic engagement centers a lot of federal candidates and federal foreign policy. Can you speak on the importance of having local Muslim city town candidates? Um, city township candidates, uh, with platforms that address community needs? It's really.
It's the, it's the quickest way to have an impact in our community. City council members who give budgets, who make votes on what happens to us locally. We have to have people at the table, whether you're Muslim or at least amicable to Muslims, that can speak our language. Very, very important.
Alhamdulillah. And our last question is from Maryam Mohammed. Is the native indigenous man, woman, and child who is least counted in America ignored and still has to fight beyond the American blood quantum laws, which have not been disbanded, being brought into discussions like this? I don't, I don't, um, know, uh, do you want to take that, Sister Ayesha?
Read it again.
It says, is the native indigenous man, woman, and child who is least counted in America ignored and, and still has a fight beyond the American quantum, uh, blood quantum laws, which have not been disbanded, being brought into discussions like this? Um, we invite everyone, I mean, I can answer that honestly. We invite everyone, we, you know, we invite everyone into our, um, conversations. And this isn't the last of our town hall. We are having a three-part town hall series. So Insha Allah, if you know anybody, um, that is willing to lend their voice or, um, be a part of this conversation, please, um, send their information to me. I can be reached at, um, info@blackmuslimleadership.org, Insha Allah. Alhamdulillah, we made it and we're only ten, nine minutes over. And in my closing, it'll just be one minute, Insha Allah, my call to action. First, I want to thank, thank, thank the audience for your great questions. This is the end of our town hall discussion this evening. Please pray for our panelists, please pray for our organizers. You know, Alhamdulillah, the, the work that we are all doing, it's not easy work. None of this is easy work. And, um, we thank you all for spending so much time with us this evening and just giving us such important wisdom and insight. And I know that I feel much better going into looking at what's at stake in the 2024 election after being a part of this conversation. So Alhamdulillah, may Allah suffice you all. As you have heard tonight from our assembled experts, there is so much at stake in the upcoming presidential election. We are facing crisis abroad and at home. And immediate thoughtful action is needed by those in positions of power. And that action will only be taken if each one of us rises, gets in, rises up, gets involved, and casts our vote. Voting is important, please, I don't want to hear any of you saying you're not going to vote, even if you're right and uncommitted. Please exercise your right to vote. When you're not voting, you're not seen, and we'll talk about that more. Um, join us on June the 29th for a workshop called, um, Advancing Community Through Civic Engagement. We're gonna talk about, a lot about voting, what these elected officials do, how to run for office, how to, it's, you know, um, ignite policy change and write bills. We're gonna talk about a lot of those things. So join us then. In the coming months, um, please encourage your communities to educate themselves on the issues facing our community and to vote in November. Each of us has the power to make a difference. And if you have any questions or need additional resources, please visit, visit Mana's website. The website is Mana, M-A-N-A justice.org. Visit blackmuslimleadership.org and we can provide advice on how to get started. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening. Be well, Assalamualaikum.